We're funky in the air and we are funky to be free.
Thank you.
Hornbuckle is a blues rock soul outfit led by the driven guitar and dynamic vocals of a member of Denver's first family of blues, Michael Hornbuckle. Don't miss them on the next Denver Loft Sessions. Partial funding for this season of the Denver Loft Sessions is provided by Venture Technologies, your local technology solutions provider. Visit them online at vendtech.com. Welcome to your Denver City Council. Please stand by. Full coverage of your Denver City Council begins now.
Good afternoon, everyone. This afternoon's meeting is being interpreted into Spanish. Sam and Alejandro, would you please introduce yourselves and let our viewers know how to enable translation on their devices?
Of course. Thank you very much for having us once again with you all. It's always a pleasure and thank you for prioritizing language justice as much as possible. Hola a todos. Muchas gracias por tenernos aquí con ustedes el día de hoy. Mi nombre es Alejandro Arrieta. Seré uno de sus intérpretes. Soy estoy aquí con mi colega Sam. Y el día de hoy, si ustedes prefieren participar en español, podrán seleccionar el icono de mundo o el icono terráqueo en la parte de abajo de su pantalla. Ahí seleccionan el español y ponen el audio original en silencio para que solamente escuchen en el idioma de su referencia. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to the Denver City Council Meeting of Monday, February 27. Council members, please rise as you're able and join Councilman Herndon in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And council members, please join Councilman Herndon as he leads us in the Denver City Council land acknowledgement.
The Denver City Council honors and acknowledges that the land on which we reside is a traditional territory of the Ute, Cheyenne, and Arapaho peoples. We also recognize the 48 contemporary tribal nations that are historically tied to the lands that make up the state of Colorado. We honor elders past, present, and future, and those who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We also recognize that government, academic, and cultural institutions were founded upon and continue to enact exclusions and erasures of indigenous peoples. May this acknowledgement demonstrate a commitment to working to dismantle ongoing legacies of oppression and inequities and recognize the current and future contributions of indigenous communities in Denver.
Thank you so much. Madam Secretary, roll call.
See Tabaka? Here. Black. Clark. Flynn.
Here.
Gilmar?
Here.
Herndon?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Cashman?
Here.
Kenech? Ortega? Sandoval?
Here.
Sawyer?
Here.
Madam President?
Here.
Nine members present.
There are nine members present. Council has a quorum. Approval of the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes of February 21st? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Council announcements. Are there any announcements today? Councilwoman Sawyer?
Thanks, Madam President. One of the things the District Five office is looking at is considering ADUs for the Montclair neighborhood. So it would be a legislative rezoning of the entire statistical neighborhood. We are going to have two community meetings. The first one will be next Wednesday online, and then the second one will be the following Tuesday, which I believe is the 14th on Zoom. I mean, at the Montclair Civic Center, which is also known as the Mulberry. So people can find information online at Denver Council Five on our social media, but hoping people can join us to find out more about that proposal. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Councilman Flynn?
Thank you, Madam President. On Thursday, March 9th, so a week and a half from now, at Lincoln High School at Evans and Federal in my district, we are staging a construction trades expo. We will have representatives from carpenters, plumbers, electricians, pipefitters, others, plus Denver's Work Now program representatives to do outreach to juniors and seniors in southwest Denver, but of course, anyone from anywhere in the city or outside the city is welcome to learn about apprenticeships in the construction trades and the opportunities that are available. I believe we're going to have some hands-on exhibits as well, and pizza, the all-important pizza. And so juniors and seniors and plus recent high school grads who are still looking for what they want, what they might want to do going forward. This is an excellent opportunity. It will be 6:00 PM at Lincoln High School, Thursday, March 9th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. For the residents living in the Washington, Virginia Vale, Virginia Village, Indian Creek, Goldsmith, and University Hills North neighborhoods, the Department of Community Planning and Development has just posted the latest update to the Near Southeast Neighborhoods Planning Initiative. If you're interested in seeing the latest recommendations on a plan that will guide these neighborhoods for the next 10 or 20 years, go to denvergov.org/nearSoutheastplan. That's denvergov.org/nearSoutheastplan. These neighborhood planning initiatives are the most important planning events that any neighborhood will have if they're looking to guide development by their values. So have a look, see, and let us know any comments that you have.
Hi, Mike. Thank you so much. District Three hosted the kickoff to the American Indian and Indigenous Historic Context Study at the Denver Indian Center this past Saturday. We will make sure that we share out the ways for community to engage in that. But I just wanted to thank the Denver Indian Center, the American Indian Commission, the Office of Storytelling, Community Planning and Development, and the Landmark Team for a really beautiful kickoff of this important study that'll be taking place, and my colleagues, Councilman Cashman and Councilwoman Kenech, who made it out. Thank you for your support as well. I would like to welcome Councilwoman Ortega to the meeting. Councilwoman Ortega, do you have any announcements before we move on?
No.
Okay. There are no presentations. There are no communications. There are no proclamations being read this afternoon. Madam Secretary, please read the bills for introduction.
In Finance and Governance Committee, 23-0132, a bill for an ordinance authorizing expenditures in the General Government Special Revenue Fund based on a letter of intent from the United States of America to award funding to the city and county of Denver for the Denver Great Kids Head Start Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Program. 23-0133, a bill for an ordinance making an appropriation in the wastewater management enterprise fund. 23-0136, a bill for an ordinance establishing a new capital fund in the Capital Improvements and Capital Maintenance Fund Series for the Library Capital Program. 23-0137, a bill for an ordinance making a rescission from and an appropriation in the Denver Public Library Fund to make a cash transfer to and appropriations in the Library Capital Fund and authorizing the purchase of capital equipment. In Land Use, Transportation, and Infrastructure Committee, 23-0124, a bill for an ordinance relinquishing portion of the easement established in Peña Station, filing number two, recorded with the Denver Clerk and Recorder at reception number 202-005-0433, located at 6105 North Tower Road.
Thank you very much. Council members, this is your last opportunity to call out an item. Councilman Herndon, will you make the motions for us tonight?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. I'll do a recap. Under resolutions, no items have been called out. Under bills for introduction, no items have been called out. Under bills for final consideration, no items have been called out. Under pending, no items have been called out. All bills for introduction are ordered published. Council members, please remember this is a consent or block vote. You'll need to vote aye. Otherwise, this is your last chance to call out an item for a separate vote. Councilman Herndon, will you please put the resolutions for adoption and the bills on final consideration for final passage on the floor?
Yes, Madam President. I move that the resolutions be adopted and bills on final consideration be placed upon final consideration and do pass in a block for the following items. 0195, 0126, 0127, 0128, 0129, 0130, 0103, 0119, 0067, 0125, 0131, 0120, 0134, 0102, 0104, 0114.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call. Oh, hang on. It's been moved and seconded. Yes. Now roll call.
See Tabaka? Aye. Herndon?
Aye.
Black? Clark? Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmar?
Aye.
Heinz?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kenech? Ortega? Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President?
Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results.
10 ayes.
10 ayes. Resolutions have been adopted and the bills have been placed upon final consideration and do pass. Tonight, there'll be a combined required public hearing on Council Bill 23-0030, amending the Denver zoning code, establishing the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay Zone District and the Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlay Zone District, and clarifying standards in the Potter Highlands Conservation Overlay Zone District and the Bungalow Conservation Overlay Zone District. And Council Bill 23-0031, changing the zoning classification for multiple properties to apply the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay and the Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlays within the Sunnyside neighborhood. Anyone wishing to speak on these matters must go online to sign up during the recess of council. If there's no objections from the members of council, the recess until 5:30.
Entanglements explores our connections to the natural world through a variety of lenses. Artists in this exhibition negotiate and engage with the environment, illustrating the complex relationships humans have to nature and its resources. Denver Restaurant Week kicks off March 3rd, so make sure to try new places and revisit your favorites as you celebrate Denver's culinary scene. Make your reservations now. In honor of Women's History Month, the Bob Ragland Library is turning into an art gallery for this special photography show about women who aren't typically recognized as being part of women's history. They are older women, and they are part of the LGBTQ community. Their history is women's history. Celebrate Denver's unique area code holiday by getting out and exploring great Denver businesses. Whether you celebrate with others at a designated concert or on your own, 303 Day is the perfect time to support local retailers and artists all day long. The Paramount Theater hosts screenings from the Banff Mountain Film Festival. Each evening features a completely different film playlist that takes you on explorations of remote landscapes and mountain cultures to adrenaline-fueled action sports. The films of this year's world tour are sure to captivate and amaze the explorer within you. When Dad feels like a little bit of Sunday afternoon timeout, Bluey and Bingo have other plans. Bluey's Big Play is a brand-new theatrical adaptation of the Emmy Award-winning children's television series with an original story. The Rapids are excited to welcome fans of the burgundy and blue back to their full-team event to ring in the 2023 season. Hosted at asterisk Denver Downtown, the party will feature photo stations, interactive experiences, music, drinks for purchase, and more. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week.
Carbon emission, but in many of these policies, they do not consider the impact on persons with disabilities. For example, they raise the gas prices to encourage people to use public transportation, but they do not pay attention to the fact that some people with disabilities cannot use public transportation simply because public transportation is not accessible. Interestingly, we, people with disabilities, have been advocating for climate-friendly transportation policies way before everyone else, because it's decades that we are advocating for accessible public transportation. So we have been climate advocates for many years without even noticing that. So transforming public transportation would be a great way to address climate change and accessibility, disability inclusion at the same time. But without considering that, increasing gas prices to reduce carbon emission would be discriminatory and excluding persons with disabilities from community even more. So that's what we mean when we talk about, when we ask global leaders to consider impact of their policies and programs on persons with disabilities. Look at the COVID situation, and now that we are recovering. COVID-19 proved that emergency setups, emergency response systems and rules in many countries are designed in a very non-inclusive way for persons with disabilities. So now that all governments are more or less introducing recovery packages, this is the best time to sit with persons with disabilities and their representative organization and ask them, what should we do so that for the next emergency, which unfortunately is inevitable, sooner or later, we don't face the exclusion and discrimination that we did face in COVID-19? For example, look at the education. Due to COVID-19, we had to transform students to remote education. That meant that many persons with disabilities could not access education and had to drop off because the remote systems were not accessible for them. At the same time, it was an opportunity for some groups of persons with disabilities who could not attend education at school, that, okay, they could use remote education. So now that we are considering education recovery policies and programs, it's a perfect timing to make sure that those who were excluded from education because of COVID-19 restrictions can go back to school, and those who could access to education due to introduction of remote learning systems remain in the education cycle. These are just examples. And the main key that I think all global leaders at country level, local level, regional, and global can use is consultation. Yes, it is important to listen to persons with disabilities, and listening to one person with disability is not enough. You should talk to different groups of persons with disabilities, because what I can share as a blind person is different from what a deaf colleague can share, and what I can share from global perspective is different from what someone at local level can share. Yes, it would take extra time, because you need to take time to consult with persons with disabilities and their representative organizations, but it's worth it, because we are 15% of the population. And yes, you need to provide the information required to understand the policy in accessible formats, in sign language, in braille or audio, in plain language for those with intellectual disabilities. But that's the obligation that all governments have under the United Nations Convention on Rights of Persons with Disabilities. So the bottom line is that come to us, talk to us, and ask us, and we will be sharing good ways for real and efficient inclusion. Thank you. Thank you.
Elham, thank you very much for those important messages. There's no doubt that if we are to be successful in our fight against climate change and COVID-19, we have to hear the voices of persons with disabilities. Your message is well, well-heard. Abimbola, if I may turn to you. Elham already mentioned transport. So here in Nigeria, in sub-Saharan Africa, the Lagos Bus Rapid Transit System is a great example of accessible design. It would be really good to get your perspective and hear how you have taken the BRT through a process which is made accessible for persons with disabilities. And importantly, what are some of the lessons that other countries can learn from the Lagos BRT?
So thank you very much for that question. So hello, everybody. I am Abimbola. I'm a black woman, and I have black hair, and my hair is in tiny little twists. I have hoods of little plaits on my head. I have metal-framed glasses on, and I'm wearing a brown and a black top. So let's talk about the Lagos BRT. So the Lagos BRT system is a first sort of, it's a way that Lagos State Government has created a regulated bus system for Lagos State. And in preparing that, we have always acknowledged, or we have identified the fact that we need to have an inclusive system. We need to ensure that persons with disabilities can access this public transportation. Now, it's interesting what Elham said, that we should talk to and engage persons with disability, and that's exactly what Lamata did as part of the planning and designing for the BRT system, not just the infrastructure, but also the rolling stock when they come. So this is a bus system, and it was challenging, bearing in mind that we're trying to implement in a developed city already. So there were things, first of all, like Elham said, we needed to engage the persons with disability communities that already had groups within Lagos. And we took their concerns, and we made sure that in the design, we implemented a number of those issues. So for instance, we have ramps on our buses for wheeling on and wheeling off of passengers. We have level boarding on our BRT stations. And recently, what we've also done, because we realized that whilst we have level boarding on our BRT systems or bus stations, when the buses are not parking at or stopping at BRT stations, it was difficult for the physically challenged to board them. So the new buses we have now are actually leaning buses, and which means that when we stop at any other station, we can, the bus can tilt and allow level boarding regardless of where we are. We have ramps. All of the new bus terminals we're building now, and Lagos is in the process of implementing a number of bus terminals in accordance with our strategic master plan. So all the bus terminals we're building now, we have ramps at them for easy access. We have specially-designed toilets for the physically challenged within our bus terminals, because that's also some of the things you sort of sometimes overlook. We have, on our rolling stock as well, we have designated seats for the physically challenged, so that when you're sitting on the bus, it's written there, you know that you need to give up a seat for a priority passenger, or there's a place to actually wheel your wheelchairs to park it on the bus. Now, one very major thing we've identified, apart from talking and engaging with physically-challenged or disabled people, is we need to train our people. No matter what you do, you need to really ensure that those who work at those bus stops, those who work as, those on the buses, understand the reason why you are telling them to do certain things. So there is a big role for the state and for the agency to ensure that we carry out regular trainings that will ensure that those who work in those facilities know what to do when they encounter the physically challenged. Know that what we are asking you to do when you see them, how to respond to them, how to work with them. And we see this regularly in the system, where we recognize that when people were not trained, they just didn't know how to react or how to deal with them. So a physically-challenged person comes to a bus that does not have a kneeling position, will need the bus driver to come out and pull out a ramp. Now, if he's not trained to understand that that is what he must do to allow the physically challenged to access his bus, he won't know to get down or to go and provide that access. So the one thing Lamata has learned is continuous training of the people who work on the system. It's fantastic to provide all of these things that are reeled off. We have pedestrian bridges that access our bus terminals. But we also need to ensure that all those who work around it are well-trained to understand what needs to be done and why they need to do it. And that is part of the things that we have learned, because when we first had all of these systems, and we realized that people were probably not responding as well as we wanted them to, we've now started to do a lot of training, advocacy, and letting people know, and also putting it out there that Lamata is in the business of actively engaging and ensuring that we're inclusive in the business of public transportation. So from Lamata's perspective, it is a deliberate action that we must make. It is, we have to be deliberate about. It is, we have to be deliberate about this inclusion. We can't just ensure that we do certain things and think it will just work. There, there is engagement and Elham mentioned that to start, we need to continuously engage those organizations and ensure that their needs are met and their needs are being constantly fed into the system. But we also need to ensure that our people are well-trained to know the reasons why they're doing what they're doing and how to do what they need to do to ensure that everybody is included. And we also have complaint lines. And I get that regularly from those who have encountered poor service at any of our bus services. And we know to follow up that complaint and to find out where it happened and we know what we now need to do. So we reach out to the complainer and we understand what their challenge was. And then we go back to identify how to deal with it. Whether it is to go back to the bus terminal and ensure that we up our training and speak to them. So it's a constant and continuous process of engagement. And I think that is the key thing, engagement. Provide all the physical infrastructure to support inclusion, but continue to talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. What a fascinating story. You talk about the use of technology, infrastructure in a different way. You talk about training, but most importantly, you talk about the need for constant voice, listening to those who face disabilities to make transport accessible for all. What an extraordinary story from Lagos. Let's continue our focus in Nigeria. And I would like to invite Ibemi to share, share her thoughts. The Identity for Inclusion, or ID4I solution, has been a game changer for athletes with disabilities. Can you tell us more about this and why it was so vital to have this provision?
Sure. Good day, everybody. My name is Ibemi Aine and I am a chocolate brown, black woman with dark brown eyes. I have brown hair and it's in an Afro and I have it pulled back. I'm also wearing a brown dress with stripes. Okay. Let's talk about ID4I. ID4I is, means Identification for Inclusion. And it's a solution being championed by Special Olympics Nigeria to facilitate the registration of people with intellectual disabilities living in Nigeria through the issuance of a national identification number. This is important to us because to attain a sustainable development goal, we need to promote more inclusive communities. To have more inclusive communities, we need to promote the equitable access to every individual in the community to opportunities and services. This will not be possible if an individual is not registered and recognized one as a citizen and to, to be able to access a world of opportunity. Special Olympics, we're focused on people, mostly, we're mostly focused on people with intellectual disabilities. We're empowering, we empower them through the power of sports. So our athletes go for training opportunities and competition opportunities. During competition and international competition, they have to travel. To travel, you need a passport. And now in Nigeria, to get an international passport, you need to have a national identification number. And a national identification number is not just to get an international passport. In order for them to access healthcare, when they want to make sure that they are good and they perform optimally during their sporting activities, to access the healthcare, they need a national identification number. Same thing with accessing financial services, to get access to communication services, to get access to education and empowerment opportunities. And a national identification number is essential. And that is why we believe that everybody should have a national identification number. Now, the reason why we reached out to various communities and families of people with intellectual disabilities and we inquired about the reasons why there's been no records of people with disabilities, especially those with intellectual disabilities registered in the database, is because a lot of family members don't know the importance of registering their ward or child with a disability, especially those with intellectual disabilities in the system. And then two, most of them are worried about the distance. They don't have the time to go out, to take out, to go to these various centers. And then that, another reason is that a lot of them are worried about the treatment that their child or ward may receive when they go to these, when they go outside of these centers. So in, in tackle these barriers, the ID4I solution has come up with three, three steps. Number one, we are educating people with intellectual disabilities, people with disabilities and their family members. We're also partnering with the National Identification Management Commission. Without them, we cannot register anybody. So through their partnership, we are able to, to train their staff on how to treat and tolerate and people with differing abilities and to provide the utmost service to these vulnerable groups. And then once that's done, three, both Special Olympics Nigeria team and the National Identification Management team go into the various communities in, across the various local government areas in Nigeria. And we try to facilitate registration locally in, in centers close to these vulnerable groups to ensure and promote their registration. We believe, we've started off in Lagos and we have already entered into 25 local government areas. And we are hoping that through the, through this, through the work we're doing, that we'll gain more partnership, partners and sponsor support to go into other states to facilitate registration for others with disabilities, especially those with intellectual disabilities across Nigeria. Nigeria is heading towards a nation that is being more strategic. And we know and we believe that we're heading to a place where we, the nation would start thinking about strategic social protection for vulnerable groups. And in that, for, for them to be able to do this, they need to know who these vulnerable groups are. And that's why it's very important for every individual to have a national identification number, especially those with disabilities.
Thank you, Ibemi, for your insightful comments. The Identity for Inclusion, or ID4I, continues to do some path-breaking work. So thank you very much. Finally, we'll wrap up this panel discussion with Rebecca. Rebecca, this is a very important time in our history in the world. We're trying to recover from COVID-19. And recovery has to be one that includes everyone. Perhaps you could share from your experience what inclusive community development looks like and what lessons do development practitioners can really see on how to ensure that disability does not stop us from ensuring inclusion and development, especially in this context when we are really coming out in a recovery process post-COVID-19. Rebecca, over to you.
Thank you so much for having me. Hi, my name is Rebecca Coakley. I am a red-headed little person and I have a chondroplastic dwarfism. I am wearing a red jacket, a black shirt. And I have a lovely three generations' worth abundance of freckles that I am very proud of. This is such an important question now more than ever because of COVID-19. We know that the epidemic has not just pretty much changed everyone's way of life, but it has also resulted in the creation of over 85 million newly-disabled people around the world. This is the largest disability population boom probably almost ever. Inclusive community development means the ability to adapt to this changing population while at the same time centering the needs of the most impacted. As my colleagues were saying, any response to climate change or transportation or poverty will be ineffective if disability is not centered. The opportunity here is really to move from how we've responded to previous crises, responding with fear, responding with isolation, with pity, to responding with empowerment. And so when I think about what this looks like, it means that development should be investing in innovation. It should be investing in best practice. It means including people with disabilities and their communities before there's a crisis, before there's a problem, in terms of both physical access, programmatic access and linguistic accessibility. From the grant-making perspective, what it means is engaging in participatory grant-making, bringing those that are directly impacted to the table from day one to decide how funding is being spent. At the Ford Foundation, as we built out our U.S. Disability Rights Program strategy this last year, this was a central part of our thinking. So we pulled together a series of disability community consultancies on our strategy, where we talked to experts, talked to family members and most importantly, talked to people with disabilities, both those that work within the disability rights and justice space and those who work in other organizations, to tell us what works and what doesn't work. Where should we be focusing on? In this time of COVID, how do we balance responding to crises with the day-to-day issues and realities that impact the lives of people with disabilities? You know, this translates into our workplaces as we're talking about the development space. What does it really mean now to go back to work? Accommodations and flexibilities that disabled people have asked for, have begged for, for years and were told were not reasonable, became provided to everyone almost overnight. That said, when we return to work, it cannot be a time for employers to shift back to inaccessibility. It also cannot be a time that employers say, okay, fine, if you were working from home all of this time, we don't have to make our workplace accessible. You can just stay at home. The new reality cannot be an excuse for segregation and development has a role in making sure that that's not the case. Development can be investing in healthcare systems. That's center versus isolating disabled people and the disability communities. Practitioners in these spaces must be more thoughtful in terms of the recovery. So many times in the development world, we believe that our job is sweeping in and telling communities what they need. And instead, we must listen. We must center those impacted. It does no good to rush in with exoskeletons when the people on the ground tells that what they need is clean drinking water and passable roads. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. Very powerful message that the new reality cannot be used as an excuse for segregation. That's a very important message for all of us. Elham, Abimbola, Ibemi, Rebecca, it's leaders like you who will ensure that development is indeed inclusive. Thank you very much for joining us in this discussion. I now want to hand over the mic to my colleague Louise Cord, who is the Global Director of Social Sustainability and Inclusion at the World Bank for a fireside chat with Jenny Lay-Fleury, who's the Chief Accessibility Officer at Microsoft. Louise, over to you.
Well, thank you very much, Janade, and good morning and welcome, everybody, to this segment of today's program, which will be a fireside chat on digital accessibility for an inclusive recovery. Before we go any further, let me just briefly introduce myself. My name is Louise Cord. I am the Global Director for Social Sustainability and Inclusion at the World Bank. I identify as a woman with short brown hair. I am today wearing dangly earrings and I have a pink scarf and a gray sweater. So I've been so impressed so far by the honesty and the meaningful discussions that we've been having on how the World Bank Group and other development actors can make a world more inclusive for people with, persons with disabilities. I now have the pleasure of welcoming Jenny Lay-Fleury to this discussion. Jenny is the Chief Accessibility Officer at Microsoft. Welcome, Jenny, and let's just dive right into the discussion. The first question I'd like to ask is about inclusion and how the World Bank sees challenges of inclusion as critical in this recovery period where COVID has done so much to exacerbate inequalities. The role of digital technology is absolutely key for an inclusive recovery amongst our client countries in the developing world. And I'd like to hear how Microsoft has the efforts that they've made to develop accessible product design and make technology available and ensure an inclusive digital access.
Thank you. Great question. And first, thank you for having me, Jenny Lay-Fleury. I am a white female sitting in a Microsoft office, so I have a whiteboard behind me, brown hair, glasses and thick red lipstick. It's early in the morning here. And you know, it's a great question. I will say that, like many, we have been learning from this period and learning really as the demographics of disability continue to go up, but the social inequity continues unfortunately to go with it. And we're seeing that really the effects of the pandemic disproportionately impact the disabled community. So it's something that's incredibly top of mind for us here at Microsoft. We, we did just recently redo our strategy to really just be very thoughtful to tackle and attack this bluntly. And with a tagline that actually came from World Bank, which was a study you did in 2016 that coined the phrase disability divide and very aptly described some of the facets and reasons why that has come to the fore. So for us, yes, we're a nerdy technical company. That is the core and the grounding that we stand on. And I think the, the bottom-line basics is making sure that we embed the disabled community into the core and fabric of what we do, everything that we do. We very much stand just vehemently on the nothing about us, without us. And so that does mean that the insights of people with disabilities, whether it's feedback channels, social listening, engaging with specific nonprofits and countries and economic differences, we collect that and garner that. We test our products with disabled communities, we design them with. And that's been able to net us bluntly better products. I mean, that there is, if this isn't just a charity, this is, or an optional thing, there is so much business benefit to doing this. But it also does mean that the bar of inclusion and accessibility within our products has systematically gone up over time. So it's, it's very, very top of mind for us. And not just in our products, but in our processes, how we hire talent, how we empower talent, how we unblock issues that could be preventing talent from going from early education into higher education, from higher education into the workforce. So yes, it's got to be thoughtful and systematic.
Could I ask you maybe just to describe in just a few words one of your most favorite dimensions of Microsoft's accessible product design? A specific one, if there's something you'd like to highlight?
Oh, crikey. There are so many. I mean, I, I feel very lucky to work with as many teams as we do. But I will say one of my favorites, and they're all my favorites, to be clear. But one of my favorites right now is the acceleration we're seeing in accessibility in gaming. And gaming and play, I think, is as important as workplace and education. Restfight and having the ability to chill out with family, with friends, whether it's on a phone, it's on a PC, or it's on any device, or it's on an Xbox. And methodically opening doors to disabled talent to game. And some of, some of the beautiful projects that I've seen come through this, even with Forza, which is a driving game, embedding British Sign Language, American Sign Language, captioning, and a whole bunch and suite of features into that to open doors to disabled gamers. There's a lot more to do, a lot more. But I think play, play is just a crucially important component to life in all parts of the world. And I don't think we put enough emphasis into opening doors there.
Interesting, interesting that I mentioned that. I wouldn't have thought of. Thank you for, and I can see why you, you raise it. It is quite important. Thank you. Let me turn now to just a question more on the how. So I understand that to do a lot of these digital accessible product lines, you have a public-private partnership. And maybe explain the how process. And you mentioned your engagement with communities and with different groups. How have, how has this been done?
Well, I think the, the first thing to recognize when you're building anything and you're aiming to achieve a higher bar of inclusion is that you're not the experts. And while we're very proud to hire, empower and publicly share, you know, our mission to get more disabled talent into Microsoft, which we've been, you know, very aggressive- which we've been very aggressively pushing forward on. We just published our new numbers at 7.1% of our U.S. population being employed with disabilities. We clearly don't represent the mass. And you know, you can't have one company representative of the globe and the true diversity of disability that exists and how that changes by country, by area, by location. So I think it really is important for us to have the right connections, the right relationships and the right processes to garner that feedback and to work together to make sure that we ultimately make it easier to be accessible and to understand the business benefits of disability. So I absolutely love working with Charlotte at World Bank. I think her expertise in the industry is legendary, and she's an amazing thought leader. But partnering with her on how we can make it easier is a very important part of what we do, working with other public-private nonprofits to, again, methodically get that feedback in. So one of those is Shepherd Center, which has 1,500 people with disabilities, and we test our products with them. And, you know, one, we get invaluable feedback. Two, it's the right economic set of processes. Individuals are paid around $50 an hour for their time. So it's also creating a workplace, which is also important, a sustainable workplace. And I think the other aspects that I look at is how can we also partner to get out technology into people's hands? One of the issues with accessibility is actually the, there's a wealth of goodness just sitting in the device in front of me that people often don't even know about or have access to. So how can we get more technology into people's hands with the right connectivity to be able to access? And we're trialing some initiatives in the States, but I do hope that they go further ashore, because that's really the benefit that we're going to see from this, to get devices affordable, sustainably affordable, into people's hands in New York and L.A. and particularly into disabled communities that may not have had access to those. And that's a partnership between the public institutions in those cities, between connectivity providers, and Microsoft as providers of the hardware and software and digital accessibility. And so I think there's a lot more that we can and should be doing. But yes, it's an utter, we've got to do this stuff together if we're going to really tackle that disability divide.
Wow, sounds really exciting. I would love to hear how this partnership goes with New York and, I think you said, L.A. and the technology providers and Microsoft, because to get accessible devices into the hands of persons with disabilities. Because I think this is, there'd be a lot of valuable lessons learned for our work in developing country context. So we look forward to continuing the partnership and staying in touch. And thank you so much for sharing your valuable knowledge and insight with us and helping the collaboration to build a more inclusive post-pandemic world. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time today and happy International Persons with Disability Day.
Thanks again, Jenny. It was great to have you here with us. And now I'll hand it back to Janade for the rest of the program.
Thank you, Jenny, for sharing your insights and experiences on the advances that Microsoft has made in accessible technology. There's a lot that we at the World Bank can learn from your experience, and I hope we'll get to continue the conversations in the future. And Louise, thank you for moderating a wonderful session. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we are now going to turn to a very special event. We'll be treated to a discussion with and performed by Warren Wawa Snite, a rapper and performer who recently performed the National Anthem at the 2021 Super Bowl. I'd like to hand over the state to Charlotte, our Global Disability Advisor at the World Bank, for a conversation with Wawa in our office at the World Bank in Washington. Charlotte, over to you.
Hi, my name is Charlotte McLennan Slapow. I'm the Global Disability Advisor at the World Bank Group. I'm a brown woman. I have long brown hair. I have green eyes. Today, I'm wearing all black. I have large silver hoops and a silver necklace around my neck. And today, I'm joined by Wawa. Wawa, please, will you introduce yourself?
All right. I am Warren Snite. Everyone calls me Wawa. This is my sign name. I'm a tall, black man. Black and gray hair. I have unique locks, pulled back. I have a blazer, a blue blazer, and a black shirt with an "I love you" sign on it. I have two unique earrings and a nice beard that shows my age.
Great. Well, really glad to have you here, Wawa. And we're so happy that you're here to celebrate with us the International Day of Persons with Disabilities. And I was wondering if you could talk to us a bit about, as a deaf person, what does resilience mean to you, particularly given the fact that we've all come through a pandemic? And really just share with us what that has meant for you?
What resilience means to me as a deaf black man is to never give up. Of course, we have limitations being in this world as a disabled person. But what COVID did was complicate those things and exacerbate what already existed. What we had to do in this pandemic is learn how to adapt, learn how to change, and improve our lives for the better moving forward. For example, Zoom is new to many of us, but now it's a common thing for all of us. We had to figure out ways to add closed captioning to videos, subtitles to videos, things that we just really took for granted or were too slow to acclimate ourselves to. Be much more inclusive visually, technologically, knowing that we all have disabilities, whether they're visible or invisible. Change was a big thing. You can say that the pandemic had blessed us. It was truly a blessing in disguise. We all had to augment what we believed reality and normalcy was. We just could not give up in the process, and that is what resilience is. We had to work together so that we can live together, be together, through these hard times and persevere to see the other side. Because we would never know what we had never thought of had we not worked together. And we can see the light at the end of this tunnel called COVID. That way, we had to be resilient, never give up.
Beautiful words, Wawa. Thank you so much for sharing that. So, you know, you had this amazing song called Loud, and it has a very powerful message. Talk to us a bit about what that message is, what it means, and how you came about conceptualizing it?
Well, the message is in and of itself. It's honestly taken just from a crazy set of mess. I turned negativity into positivity, a message that we all needed to learn. What I wanted to do was be bold with it, take the next step forward and invigorate something new. The word loud in and of itself, many people view deaf people as being loud. We clap, we sign loud, we're loud in our voices. But honestly, with my cochlear implant, I find that the world is loud. Cars are hunking, the things you take for granted are loud to me. What is the difference? I decided to use loud in an altruistic sense, to be bold, to be brave, to go into uncertainty with the certainty that we are to come out with something creative. And that's what the pandemic did. It provided something that, on the onset, seemed negative. We, as a people, came together and found something positive. I came up with something catchy. I never wrote something like this before. But people were just inspired and ran with it, and that's what I think gave worth to the song.
Thank you for sharing that with us, and thank you for, you know, developing that beautiful song. So what we're going to do now is ask everybody to stay tuned because we're going to listen to the song right now.
That was amazing. And for someone who comes from a musical family, my wife is a musician, I am absolutely thrilled to have listened to Wawa sing today. And I'm sure the song will be stuck in all of our heads all day long. Thank you once again for sharing your talent, Wawa, and experience with us. You truly brought to life the celebration that is today. Thank you, Wawa, for inspiring us. We're coming to the end of this celebration, but I'm sure the conversation started here will continue. Let me close by thanking our guests for sharing the remarkable work, insights, and life stories. You have shown what can be achieved when we deliberately include persons with disabilities in the design of our recovery response. As Mari mentioned earlier, today is a day to recognize and value the tremendous contributions and journeys of persons with disabilities and to reflect on future action promoting inclusive and accessible societies. We at the World Bank will continue to step up our efforts to ensure that the persons with disabilities around the world have access to opportunities and support to follow their dreams and contribute fully to their communities and their economies. We also acknowledge the long road ahead to address the gaps in access, participation, and opportunities that persons with disabilities continue to systematically encounter, unfortunately. I look forward to continuing our work together to promote inclusion and expand equitable opportunities for persons with disabilities and ensure that the future is indeed accessible. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you once again for joining us today. I hope that we keep these important conversations going. Thank you very much.
Welcome to another big train tour at the Colorado Railroad Museum. This week, we'll be taking a look at Colorado and Southern Railway Post Office and Express Car Number 254. Donated to the museum in 1968 by the Colorado and Southern, this heavyweight steel railroad car has served as a popular step aboard exhibit for many years. It remains proudly displayed in golden and ready to tell the story of the U.S. Railway Mail Service, one of the great game changers of the 19th century for our sprawling and growing country. Hi, I'm Paul Hammond, Executive Director of Colorado Railroad Museum. Our subject railway post office, or RPO for short, itself has one of the less complex histories compared to other artifacts in our full-size rail vehicle collection. Built in 1924 by American Car and Foundry, this car combined an RPO section in one end of the car with a railway express section in the other. It was delivered to the Colorado and Southern as its number 254. It would retain the same number and basic appearance throughout its entire service life. But railway post offices were not so much known for their individual attributes as for their part in making up a nationwide system. Let's take a look at the history of the railway mail service here in the U.S. and the role that number 254 played in providing that service from Montana, south through Wyoming and Colorado to Texas. As we know today, a successful representative democracy depends upon the free exchange of people, goods, and ideas. The railway's invention in the early part of the 19th century would help speed up commerce throughout the United States, but mail still moved at a relatively slow pace. It was sorted in post offices, then loaded into bags and sent to other post offices, either by horse and wagon or sometimes by train. And then it was again sorted and moved on to its final destination, perhaps stopping again along the way for more service. George Armstrong, manager of the Chicago Post Office in the early 1860s, is generally credited with being the founder of the concept of en route mail sorting aboard trains. Mail had been carried in locked pouches aboard trains previously, but there had been no organized system of sorting en route to have mail prepared for delivery when the mail pouches reached their destination city. Armstrong experimented with this concept, and the first railway post office, or RPO, began operating on the Chicago and Northwestern Railway out of Chicago in 1864. The railway mail service was officially inaugurated just a few years later in 1869. By then, the system had expanded to virtually all major railroads, and the country was divided into six operating divisions. A superintendent managed each division, all under the direction of Mr. Armstrong, who had been appointed general superintendent of the new postal railway service. By 1907, over 14,000 clerks were providing service over 203,000 miles of railroad. When the post office began handling parcel post in 1913, Terminal Railway Post Office operations were established in major cities to handle the large increase in mail volume. The railway mail service reached its peak in the 1920s, then began a gradual decline with the growth of the automobile and eventually commercial aviation and jet aircraft. RPO service on branch lines and secondary routes was discontinued first. Abandonments accelerated in the late 1950s and early 1960s, and many of the remaining lines were discontinued in 1967. Because these mail routes had helped to subsidize the passenger trains they were attached to, it's no wonder that many passenger trains were also being discontinued at the same time. The very last railway post office operated between New York and Washington, D.C. on June 30, 1977. Today, the U.S. mail operates in a hub-and-spoke fashion, with major regional sorting centers doing most of the processing, then sending mail directly to the cities where it is distributed. The railway post office system was The railway post office system was very different. Let's imagine that you live in the small town of Trincheria, along the Colorado and Southern, south of Trinidad. You drop off a letter at the post office addressed to a good friend in El Paso, Texas. Your postmaster collects up that day's mail and sets out a bag that will be picked up by an evening train heading south towards Texas. The train won't even stop in Trincheria, but instead, the clerks aboard the train will kick out a bag of mail for the town and immediately lift the catcher arm on the mail hook to snag the day's mail from Trincheria. Once aboard, the clerks will quickly sort all of the first-class mail. This is an important step, because one of the things they have to know is how to route your letter. It will need to transfer to another train headed in the correct direction. This train is headed for Amarillo and Fort Worth. Your letter might get handed off one or more times to end up being dropped off in San Antonio. It will likely be there the next day, though, since it's only a short distance. This process aboard the RPO car will be repeated again and again at each station during the clerk's 12- to 14-hour shift. This was before zip codes. These post office employees were regularly tested to ensure that they knew their jobs and the correct sorting location in all of the mail cubbies for all of the cities in the U.S. And these employees carried service revolvers because they were handling the U.S. mail, securities, cash, and all manners of valuables that needed to be kept safe and secure. They also had to carry small change, as on many RPO routes, anyone could walk up to the car in a station and purchase a stamp, or simply deposit a letter into a mail slot built into the side of the car. Our car, number 254, was one of five identical cars ordered by the Colorado and Southern, a Burlington Route subsidiary in 1924. The Colorado and Southern's standard gauge territory stretched from Billings, Montana on the north, to Denver, and then south to Fort Worth and Dallas, Texas. The railway began as the consolidation of several bankrupt railroads in 1898, including a number of narrow-gauge routes hailing back to the famed Georgetown, Breckenridge, and Leadville, and the Denver-South Park and Pacific. In 1908, the Chicago-Burlington and Quincy Railroad bought control of the Colorado and Southern, although the line continued to operate separately. The Colorado and Southern was also the parent company of the Fort Worth and Denver Railway, which ran from a connection of Tex Line south and east into Texas. This part of the CNS system was established as a separate company because Texas law required that railroads operating within its borders had to be incorporated within that state. Railway post offices at first came in various sizes and varied depending upon the railroad. But by the late 19th century, the postal service had developed standards for these cars. The length, layout, even ventilation and lighting intensities were specified. In terms of size, several standard configurations were available, depending on the rail volumes that were being sorted and carried. Car number 254 is just over 70 feet long in total. The RPO section of the car occupies about 30 feet of this total. The balance of the car was used by the American Railway Express Company, later known as Railway Express Agency, an early package shipment company that used the American Railroad Network to move packages nationwide for local distribution to their destination, much like UPS and FedEx do today via aircraft. Car 254 and its siblings operated up and down the lines Billings to Denver and Denver to Amarillo, RPO routes continuously, until railway mail service on them was finally discontinued in 1967. In addition to newspapers and letters and other more typical mail, the car likely carried parcels filled with baby chicks and live bees, cash payrolls in the tens of thousands of dollars, gold bars, and more over its many years of operation. No wonder those service revolvers were required equipment. Donated to the museum in 1968 by the Colorado and Southern, car 254 was moved to Golden soon thereafter, and has been permanently displayed ever since. It has been restored on one side to its "as-delivered" appearance, and on the other to its later Burlington Route appearance. It remains an icon not only of Colorado Rariding, but also of the United States Postal Service and the ever-important mail, which helped bring our spread-out nation closer together throughout the 19th and 20th centuries.
If you are a parent of a preschool-aged child, chances are you've spent many hours of your life playing trains, Thomas trains, to be exact. But have you ever looked at that little blue engine and wondered where he came from? How much do you know about Sir Topham Hatt's most useful engine? And what does a broomstick have to do with all of this? Well, today, we're going to cover how Thomas grew from a father's gift into a toy beloved the world over. It all started with a little boy in England in about 1914. Wilbert Audrey was the son of Reverend Vera Audrey, and father and son would often walk around his parish in Hampshire. One of the places they would walk was the Battersley Bridge near the rail line to watch the railway workers in action. Later, the Audrey family moved to Box in Wiltshire. This happened to be near the Great Western Line, where father and son would again often walk. At the end of the Box Tunnel, which was near their home, there were several engines known as bank or helper engines, which were used to assist other engines to climb steep grades or add extra motive power in different situations. The young Wilbert would ask his father questions about these helpful little engines, and there was never a question his father could not answer. Lying in bed at night, listening to the engines' different whistles and bells, Wilbert would imagine them talking to each other about their work. This would prove significant when Wilbert had his own son many years later. Fast forward to the 1940s, when Wilbert, now also a reverend like his father, is a grown man with his own young family. In 1942, his three-year-old son Christopher came down with a bout of measles and needed to be entertained as he convalesced. Reverend Audrey spent many bedtimes telling stories of the helpful little engines. Each engine had his own personality, and Audrey would base the stories on actual events he recalled from his own childhood. Whether it was an engine stuck in a tunnel, struggling to climb a grade, or needing to be repositioned after a derailment, Audrey would repeatedly recount the many adventures of Edward, Henry, Gordon, and later, Thomas. Christopher memorized the stories and did not allow his father to deviate from the plot. As a result, Audrey wrote the stories down in pencil on note paper so the family could enjoy them for years to come. That same year, as a Christmas gift for Christopher, Audrey fashioned a little Thomas and an Edward using pieces of broomstick and scraps of wood. Thus, the very first wooden Thomas was created decades before he was available to buy in stores. It was Reverend Audrey's mother and his wife Margaret who together had the idea to send the stories to a publisher. A cousin in the Audrey family was able to find a publisher so quickly that Audrey did not have time to formally type the stories, so he sent the scraps of note paper he had jotted down back in 1942. And in 1945, The Three Railway Engines was first published. Thomas the Tank Engine came shortly thereafter, and through the years, Audrey would publish 105 stories total. Audrey had sketched rough drafts of how the trains were to appear in his book, but he was disappointed with the direction taken by his first illustrator, William Middleton. The faces were too flat. The appearance of Thomas as we know him today was born of the illustrations by Reginald Payne in the second book in the series, Thomas the Tank Engine, which was published in 1946. In 1950, Audrey took a trip to the Isle of Man, at which he discovered the official title of the bishop on the Isle of Man was Lord Bishop of Sodor and Man. This is where he first came up with the fictional island of Sodor, on which Thomas and his friends live, and which lies between the Isle of Man and mainland England. Tramway Engines would be the last children's story written by Reverend Audrey, which was published in 1972. Later, in 1982, Christopher Audrey would resume writing Thomas stories for his son, Richard, and he would continue writing one new story per year until 1995. Thomas made his television debut in Britain in 1981 and in America in 1989. Episodes of Thomas the Tank Engine and Friends were first produced using a technique called live-action model animation, and were narrated by different people. Perhaps the most famous narrator came in 1984, when Ringo Starr, the former drummer of The Beatles, became the main narrator. The live-action animation appears to be using garden-scale versions of Thomas and his friends, like the ones you see here from the Denver Garden Railway Society, which has a beautiful and intricate track setup here at the Colorado Railroad Museum. Now on to the toys. The first commercially sold Thomas toys were actually cardboard cutouts that came with the Railway Series books in 1957. But by 1967, the first 3D train set and loop of track came to stores in Britain. The little wooden train sets, with which we're familiar today, were first manufactured in 1992. The original trains were simple, just a few pieces of wood stuck together with simple expressions, little detail, and few plastic components, only the faces and wheels. The tracks Thomas rode on were also very simple, no details, just plain wood. Over the next five years, some of the Thomas Wooden Railway Line's most collectible items were released. The troublesome brake van is perhaps the most rare wooden Thomas item of all. Other collectibles include the old-style Sir Topham Hatt's car, the sad-faced Henry from 1998, and the three lovely ladies pictured here, the open carriages Ada, Jane, and Mabel. What happened next is interesting. The shapes of the Thomas trains were slowly influenced less by the book's imagery and more by that of the TV show. In 2002, all of the toy train spaces underwent a redesign to bring them closer to their appearance in the show. This happened again in 2011, because in that year, the Thomas the Tank Engine show began to be produced using CGI, or computer-generated imagery. In 2013, Fisher Price acquired the Thomas toy collection, and they continue to produce the sets today. Thomas's sets are more involved than they have ever been.
Get it out of my head, out on paper, and therefore, get that relief.
Those stories and more on the next episode of Elevating Denver.
Hey, Denver, the decision is yours on April 4. Make your voice heard by voting in the 2023 municipal election. Stay up to date on the candidates and the issues you'll see on your ballot at denverdecides.org. There you'll find Denver's most complete guide to help you choose your next mayor, city council members, and more. Candidate profiles, live candidate forums, and ballot issue breakdowns can all be found at denverdecides.org. Denver decides, where Denver voters turn to get informed.
Winter is here, and icy sidewalk conditions can be dangerous for pedestrians. All Denver property owners are responsible for the sidewalk in front of their property. If you see an icy spot on a public sidewalk, call 311 or report the problem through pocketgov.com. Remember to include a picture if you can, as they are always helpful to identify the exact location. The city will then send out a neighborhood inspector to the address as soon as possible. Businesses and apartment buildings are required to begin snow removal as soon as it stops snowing. Residential properties have 24 hours until they have to shovel. Let's all do our part to keep Denver's sidewalks safe for everyone. Denver 311 and Pocket Gov are helping you navigate Denver City Services.
Get ready, Denver, it's almost time to vote for our mayor, city council, clerk and recorder, auditor, and more on Election Day, April 4. Ballots go out March 13, and you have until March 27 to return it by mail or drop it off when it's convenient for you at any one of the citywide ballot drop boxes or drive-throughs. If you choose to vote in person, vote centers will be open through 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. To help research your vote, watch upcoming Denver Decides forums and visit denervotes.org. Drop off your ballot or be in line to vote by 7:00 p.m. on Tuesday, April 4. And be ready when it's time to vote.
Do you want to be active in your community, but you don't know when or where things are happening? Well, don't sweat it. Just check out the upcoming events calendar on denvergov.org. It's your one-stop shop for community meetings, online workshops, and more, so you can be fully informed and involved. You can even search by date, keyword, or even what neighborhood you live in. Plus, you can also see on what holidays the city has closed. The upcoming events calendar, yet another great feature on the all-new denvergov.org.
Entanglements explores our connections to the natural world. Through a variety of lenses, artists in this exhibition negotiate and engage with the environment, illustrating the complex relationships humans have to nature and its resources. Denver Restaurant Week kicks off March 3, so make sure to try new places and revisit your favorites as you celebrate Denver's culinary scene. Make your reservations now. In honor of Women's History Month, the Bob Ragland Library is turning into an art gallery for this special photography show about women who aren't typically recognized as being part of women's history. They are older women, and they are part of the LGBTQ community. Their history is women's history. Celebrate Denver's unique area code holiday by getting out and exploring great Denver businesses. Whether you celebrate with others at a designated concert or on your own, 303 Day is the perfect time to support local retailers and artists all day long. The Paramount Theater hosts screenings from the Banff Mountain Film Festival. Each evening features a completely different film playlist that takes you on explorations of remote landscapes and mountain cultures to adrenaline-fueled action sports. The films of this year's world tour are sure to captivate and amaze the explorer within When that feels like a little bit of Sunday afternoon timeout, Bluey and Bingo have other plans. Bluey's Big Play is a brand-new theatrical adaptation of the Emmy Award-winning children's television series with an original story. The Rapids are excited to welcome fans of the burgundy and blue back to their full-team event to ring in the 2023 season. Hosted at asterisk Denver Downtown, the party will feature photo stations, interactive experiences, music, drinks for purchase, and more. And that's a quick look at what's happening in Denver this week. The city and county of Denver's website at denvergov.org offers a range of services that make it possible for people to interact with city government without physically visiting any city buildings or other government locations. It's guaranteed to save you time. Pocket Gov allows you to communicate with local government via a mobile device or home computer. You can gain access to information that ranges from property values to schedules for trash collection, recycling, and street sweeping. Pocket Gov also allows users to easily report problems such as potholes or graffiti. Pocket Gov, making city living a whole lot easier. Denver 311 provides residents with an effortless, accessible way to navigate city services. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Denver 8 TV is the municipal access television station for the city and county of Denver. You can watch us on Comcast on Channel 8 and in HD on Channel 880. Ever miss one of your favorite programs or even a city council meeting? Just go to denvergov.org/denver8tv and watch anytime, anywhere. You can also find us on YouTube. Just search for City and County. You can also find us on YouTube, just search for City and County of Denver. The Denver Police Department strives to operate a police agency focused on preventing crime in a respectful manner, demonstrating that everyone matters. For an emergency, dial 911. For non-emergencies, dial 720-913-2000. The city and county of Denver encourages the use of its social media sites as a forum for discussion. Stay connected with your city on Twitter, Instagram, or Facebook. Go to denvergov.org for more information. The city and county of Denver is working with local, state, and federal partners to provide accurate information about the coronavirus to the public. Help us spread facts, not fear.
Welcome to your Denver City Council. Please stand by. Full coverage of your Denver City Council begins now.
Council will now reconvene from our earlier session. There is no unfinished business. There are no proclamations being read this evening. We do have one combined public hearing tonight. For those participating in person, when called upon, please come to the podium. On the monitor on the wall, you'll see your time counting down. For those participating virtually when called upon, please wait until our meeting host promotes you to speaker. When you're promoted, accept the promotion and turn on your camera if you have one in your microphone. All speakers should begin your remarks by telling council your name and city of residence, and if you feel comfortable doing so, your home address. If you've signed up to answer questions only, please just state your name and note that you are available for questions of council. Speakers will have three minutes, there is no yielding of time. If translation is needed, you'll be given an additional three minutes for your comments to be interpreted. Speakers must stay on the topic of the hearing and direct your comments to council as a whole. Please refrain from profane or obscene speech and refrain from individual or personal attacks. Councilman Herndon, will you please put Council Bill 23-0030 and Council Bill 23-0031 on the floor for final passage?
Yes, Madam President, I move that Council Bills 23-0030 and 23-0031 be placed upon final consideration and due pass in a block.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion in a second? Or Councilman Herndon motioned. Okay, we have a mover in a second. The combined required public hearing for Council Bills 30 and 31 is open. Speakers may address either or both bills. May we have the staff report, Community Planning and Development?
Yes, good evening, City Council. Brad Johnson, Community Planning and Development. Today we have for you two conservation overlays. Those are text amendments to the zoning code and then a map amendment to apply those conservation overlays to SU and TU zone properties within Sunnyside. Sponsored for this is Councilwoman Sandoval. As I said, this is a text amendment. The text amendment applies to primary structures only, so no application to accessory structures, including accessory dwelling units. We would create one conservation overlay being the Sunnyside Conservation Overlay and then a second Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlay. We'd make some minor amendments in Article 13 to support those changes, to add those conservation overlays, and then we did some few cleanup items in Conservation Overlay 4 and Conservation Overlay 6. And then, as I said, the map amendment would apply that conservation overlay throughout the neighborhood. And the purpose of a conservation overlay in this particular is to tweak the design standards that are in the zoning ordinance for this area to result in development and additions, new construction that's more visually compatible and fits in better with the existing patterns in the neighborhood. We're in Council District 1, of course, in the Sunnyside neighborhood. And this map breaks down the two different overlays. Again, we have Conservation Overlay 7, which is that Sunnyside Conservation Overlay. And we have Conservation Overlay 8, which is Sunnyside Conservation and Brick Overlay. They're both the same overlay, except for one element. The CO8 overlay has this building materials requirement within it, but otherwise, all the provisions are the same. It's a little over 3,000 properties that it would apply to and 651 acres. So how Conservation Overlay works at a high level is that we we have a code that is context-sensitive by nature. We have suburban districts, we have urban districts, and so on. The rules vary by zone lot size and zone lot width and are informed by prevailing heights and neighborhoods and things like that. However, when you're zoning an entire city as we did in 2010, you have to group a lot of areas that might not be exactly the same together into one zone district. And so rather than trying to figure out for every little subdivision or every little neighborhood in the city exactly what was the right approach, we went with a broader approach back then. But we knew, or many, but other people knew that we wouldn't get it right in every area and every neighborhood might not want the exact same design standards. And so we enabled through the zoning code this tool, which is the Conservation Overlay, that allowed neighborhoods, council members to come together and basically relook at that the design standards that applied to a given area and see if there may be some tweaks that are desired to to be more in line with the patterns that you actually see on the ground. So what it does essentially is the zoning and the overlay sits on top of the baseline zoning that will remain in the code. And if there's a discrepancy between the two, the overlay's rules are the ones that apply. An overlay can't change uses, so we couldn't through a Conservation Overlay decide we were going to allow accessory dwelling units everywhere or allow commercial and residential areas or something like that. So it's limited to design standards. So I'll start just by walking through the text amendment. If you were to walk out through the blocks of Sunnyside, you will see a lot of variety of style. You'll see a mix of house and duplex buildings, mainly with some multi-unit buildings mixed in for sure. But you'll see some commonalities between buildings even of varying styles. You'll see typically one-to-two-story buildings. You'll see mostly pitch roofs. If you see flat roofs, they're usually of a lower scale. You'll see pretty modest footprints in terms of the building coverage that you'll see out there. You'll typically see porches that are projecting from the front wall of buildings or expressing a one-story element down the street as you observe the streetscape. And then in much of the neighborhood, you'll see that brick is a very common building material that's used there. So over the years, the neighborhood has been working very hard with the Council District to start by looking at what are the issues that they even wanted to address. And so early on, I think it became clear many years ago that the some of the key issues were the scale and massing that the existing code allowed that was out of step with the scale and massing of the neighborhood. There was some concern about the lack of street relationship and rhythm. And again, thinking about first-story elements, porches, things like that that were missing in some new development that was coming online in the neighborhood. And then this concern about incompatible materials being used, at least in certain types, certain parts of the neighborhood. So this graphic that you see, you see the bulk planes, that's that kind of building envelope within which a building can be constructed. That's established in the zoning ordinance. You see some of the typical building forms that you'd see out on the left and the right and the middle. You see kind of what was happening in the neighborhood where buildings were being designed to just fill up that bulk plane to the absolute maximum that it could with no regard or not much regard, at least to the prevailing character of the neighborhood. So with that, those issues in mind, Neighborhood worked very diligently, very hard to kind of establish some key objectives and intent. And firstly, trying to ensure that buildings, new buildings, additions were context-sensitive in terms of mass and scale, looking at ways to make sure that roof forms are more compatible, trying to maintain that rhythm of unenclosed porches along the streetscape, but also maintaining flexibility around style, not trying to dictate, you know, it should be an arts and crafts building or it should be this or that, but focusing on form and those kind of fundamental key features. And those are, those objectives are inherent to both the CO7 and CO8 Conservation overlays being proposed here. And then in CO8, there's this, again, this building materials element. So there was a desire there to promote visual compatibility of development with that strong pattern of brick plating that you'd see around certain parts of the neighborhood to focus those requirements on those building walls that are most visible from the public streets. So for example, a front wall directly facing the street, having a more emphasis there than a rear wall that would face a a rear zone lot line. There and starting with the scale and massing. So this Conservation Overlay would reduce the building height allowed in feet from 30 to 35 down to 30, and then for for all roofs. And then for what's called a low-slope roof, is it essentially a flat roof or a nearly flat roof? The building maximum would be lowered down to 22 feet. This overlay would incrementally reduce the bulk planes or compress the bulk plane a little bit. So part of what builds that bulk plane or that that building envelope is these side vertical vertical height at the side zone lot lines. You see those red elements there in the existing bulk plane. Those are 17 feet, and then you go about a 45-degree angle from there up to the maximum height. And so this would just bring those down by three feet down to 14 to get that mass and scale a little bit more in line with what you'd see out in the neighborhood now. Second, our next one is to limit the gross floor area to a maximum of 3,000 square feet for most lots and then allow a little bit more flexibility for a larger lot. That would apply to just above grade floor areas, not like a finished basement or a new basement or something like that. And this square footage maximum of 3,000 square feet would only apply to the urban house form, not to like a tandem house or duplex form. There would be a requirement for a front porch, and that requirement would establish some basic design criteria for that porch, like its size and its depth and how it's configured. And then now again for CO8 only, so that more southern area of the neighborhood, this is where that brick cladding requirement would apply and it would establish a minimum percentage of brick requirement are required on exterior walls. And again, focusing on those walls that are most visible from the public street from the right away. So sorry, this is a little bit technical drawing, but it's meant to show a few different in plan view, a few different building configurations and how this rule would apply. So on street-facing walls, 60% of the wall would be required to be of brick material. On sidewalls, it would be 40, and then on like a rear-facing wall, it would be zero. And any wall that this would apply to would only be those walls that are in the front, 65% of the zone lot depth. It would be for new development only, so even like rooftop addition or pop-top or something like that would not apply. Be fully new construction that we're talking about here. And then like openings, like windows or doors would not be part of that calculation. So now from the text amendment, I'll move on to the map amendment, talking about the existing context here. So these are some of the slides you're more used to seeing in these types of presentations. So here's the existing zoning. It's mostly USU and UTU of a few different varieties out there. There are a mix of more commercial mixed-use districts in there that, of course, this overlay would not apply to. Existing land uses is primarily single-unit residential. There is some, certainly some two-unit and multi-unit residential mixed in there. And again, some commercial and institutional uses as well. I've already shown you a lot of pictures, but here are some more in that typical format pointing to like a specific block where where these were taken. So see some of the low-scale neighborhood photos. Different styles, but common elements for sure among these forms. Few more photos of the area. In terms of public outreach, the, this has been going on for many, many years. Going back to Councilman Espinoza and Councilwoman Sandoval, who picked this up as soon as she came in. I think even before she came in, she was heavily involved in it. And she carried it forward from 2019 when she came on to the council. There's been a lot of outreach around this, and to try to put it on one slide is probably quite an understatement. So I don't mean to do that, but I didn't want to go on and on. Maybe some of the neighbors could talk more about this, but one of the key elements was there was a neighborhood working group that met many, many, many times over the last several years, working really hard, really digging into very technical zoning and development issues to come up with a consistent driven proposal that then was taken out to the broader neighborhood for input. We follow the typical process for a text and map amendment as we would with any other, and here we are at the council hearing. At the time that I sent this PowerPoint, we had received, I realize I should have written this a little bit different. We've received letters of support from 45 individuals. A couple of people sent in multiple letters, a few more letters than 45, about 45 individuals, and then 15 letters in opposition. Last Thursday afternoon after I sent this, I received a letter of support from the SUNY RNO, and I think you guys were on that as well, so hopefully you received that. And then just earlier today, I got a message from Councilwoman Sandoval that showed a petition from a group of neighbors within the Chaffee Park subdivision within Sunnyside that I think was from back in 2019, but I think was in support of the councilwoman pursuing this Conservation Overlay. Did I describe that correctly? So looking at the review criteria, first, we have a review criteria that's specific to Conservation Overlay. And what that basically says is that the area to which a Conservation Overlay is applied should have distinctive building features, site features, things like that. And so in Sunnyside, some of those prevailing features that relate to this overlay are high mass roof forms, front porches, and brick plating, as I've mentioned. In the councilwoman's application materials that are within your packet, you'll see some data as she's pulled and some analysis that relates to this as well. And then we have consistency with adopted plans, starting with conflict 2040. Find that this Conservation Overlay would be consistent with numerous goals in this plan, just a few of which are called out here and others in your staff report. For Blueprint Denver, the context is urban, so that calls for single-unit, two-unit uses with some multi-unit uses embedded within the neighborhood. This text and map amendment will just tweak the design standards, so won't change the uses or anything like that. And therefore, it's likely to have really no impact in terms of the consistency of the zoning in this area with the Blueprint, Blueprint Denver neighborhood context. Next is future place type, which most of the neighborhood is is residential low, so that's that kind of light tan color there, which calls for predominantly single-unit and two-unit uses, buildings up to two and a half stories in height. And so we aren't changing the height, we're still going to continue to allow up to two and a half stories, at least for a pitch roof. And so by and large, this wouldn't really have an impact in terms of consistency with future place type. It's single unit today, it'll be single unit and two unit. Sorry, single unit and two unit today, it'll be single unit and two unit. When this is, goes into effect, just the design standards will change a bit. I will call out there are a few areas here that are not residential low. Like you'll see one in this kind of hot pink color up in the top left, that's community corridor. And then there's some kind of at the eastern edge of the neighborhood. Some of those future place types perhaps would support zoning beyond single unit or two unit. And so at a time at which in the future, if a rezoning were to come forward for one of those at a time at which in the future, if, if a rezoning were to come forward for one of those areas, I think it would be appropriate to support something beyond single unit or two unit potentially. If that zoning change were to be made, it would be appropriate also to drop the overlay or remove the overlay because the overlay is intended specifically for single unit or two unit based zone districts. Future street types, there's a variety out there. Future, future street types and blueprint Denver speak to kind of the, the land uses along a certain corridor or the, the front setbacks of buildings from those corridors or streets. We aren't changing with this overlay, anything about the setbacks or the allowed land uses. And so there really would be no impact related to consistency with blueprint Denver's future street types from adoption of this text map amendment. Next is the growth area strategy. Most of the areas, all other areas of the city. Again, you see that little strip in the northwest corner of the rezoning area, which is community centers and corridors, which in that area perhaps would allow or, or support potentially a, a reason to something beyond two unit. But overall, this, this text and map amendment would continue to allow incremental growth, just like the single unit and two unit districts that will be applied to do today. Some higher level policies that aren't map related are that blueprint Denver says very specifically that it supports the use of conservation overlays in areas with to conserve distinct features and retain existing characters. So this is right out of blueprint. It's very clear. And so this is really the driving policy frankly, that we look at to ensure that we're, we're in line with blueprint Denver for, for an overlay like this. Blueprint ever also supports the use of legislative rezoning as a tool for large areas, which this is, is one of those. We have some consistency there. As a large text amendment, we do do the equity analysis. So looking first at access to opportunity, the neighborhood scored or the area of the rezoning anyway scored as average in terms of access to opportunity. And that relates to things like access to centers and corridors and the uses that are there as well as transit service. But of course, this is just a tweak to design standards. So we have any impact on change to access to those types of amenities. So it's probably it's going to have no impact in one direction or the other related to access to opportunity. Secondly, we have vulnerability to involuntary displacement. And there's a range of scores that come up there. But again, with no change to, to the permitted uses that would be allowed there. It's like, we're not able to through this suddenly allow ADUs or to create income restricted housing or things like that. It's likely to have negligible impact in either direction related to involuntary displacement. Just again, tweaking the design standards here. Housing diversity, again, a variety of scores depending on which part of the neighborhood you look at. We're again, not changing anything to the number of dwelling units that would be allowed on the lot. I did talk about those limits on for urban house of three thousand square feet for the above ground square footage. Maybe that could have a minor impact. Still three thousand square feet is, you know, it's pretty sizable dwelling unit, especially compared to what you see out there in the neighborhood. But maybe that could have a small impact on keeping some of the sizes of homes down. So might have a little bit of impact on meeting housing diversity goals. And then the last one is jobs diversity. So again, without changing land uses and introducing new job, job, creating land uses through an overlay like this, it's likely to have no impact related to jobs diversity. The same uses that are there are allowed there now would be allowed into the future with this overlay. And then the last one, we have this Sunnyside neighborhood plan from nineteen ninety-two. It mostly focuses on, feel, a lot of us focus on sidewalk improvements and stuff that happens in the right way that you often see in, in neighborhood plans like this, at least the older ones. There is some language in there about design vision, about trying to continue to support a mix of architectural styles. We did feel that given the flexibility that's built into the, the proposed text amendment, that it is consistent with the big picture policies in this as well. And on balance, obviously looking at the direction from the other plans as well. And then lastly, these last two are that the text and map amendment would result in uniform district regulations and that they would thoroughly further the public health, safety and welfare of the community by implementing our adopted plans as we just talked about, but also many of the things that happen to be happening in, in the provisions that are in this conservation overlay are related to what's on the ground, but this is a very walkable neighborhood, right? You guys have probably spent time there. You know that. And so many of these things, while they're trying to keep the character of the neighborhood, it turns out that the character of the neighborhood is highly, highly walkable. And so this in that way I think will contribute to pedestrian oriented neighborhood that goes beyond just trying to be consistent in context sensitive. And so with that, we do recommend that city council approve the text amendment as well as the map.
Thank you so much, Brad. We've got eight individuals signed up to speak this evening and I'll call the first few that are participating virtually. And that those that are in chambers, if you are here in person, after your name is called, please make your way to the front bench. Our first online sign up is Joseph Gonzalez. And I don't think we saw him in there. He's not in chambers. Okay. Our next speaker who is online is Jesse Paris.
Yes. Good evening, members of council. I was watching at home. My name is Jesse LaShawn Paris and I'm representing for Black Star Action Movement for Self-Defense, Positive Action Commitment for Social Change, as well as the Unity Party of Colorado, the East Denver Residence Council, Subaka's Black Experience and Has, Frontline Black News. And yet and still, I will still be the next mayor of Denver in twenty twenty-three and I reside in District Eight in Christopher Herndon's district at the Fusion Studios. I'm in full support of this change. We need to maintain the cultural integrity of our neighborhoods throughout the seventy-eight neighborhoods that make up Denver. So I'm at full support of this on the north side. My only questions, my only question is what were the fifteen letters of opposition all about? Can somebody please let us know what that was? And it meets off three of your criteria that you currently use for such zonings and hearings. So I'm at full support of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll come back to chambers for Jamie Chesser.
Good evening. Thanks for being here. I'm happy to be with you. My name is Jamie Chesser, C H E S S E R. My family and I live at forty-three oh seven Tahone Street in Denver. Just want to share our enthusiastic support for these two overlays. My family and I have lived in a nineteen oh four home in Sunnyside at forty-third and Tahone since twenty nineteen. Like many, I have been saddened to see the erosion of the character of the neighborhood with the loss of original homes with front porches, respectful setbacks and vegetation lost to unsustainable new development. We love our historic home in Sunnyside and the neighborhood filled with historic properties. The open space of Chaffey Park across the street, walkable mom and pop stores to visit and frequent and support. It is a very walkable neighborhood. My husband and I also own a home in West Highlands neighborhood inside the Packards Hill Historic District. And we can speak personally to the benefits from the establishment of the Packards Hill Historic District. And we firmly believe that the families, community and the history of the area over there are better today for a multitude of reasons, having that historic designation. Districts, we feel whether conservation or historic are methods for conserving and preserving history, culture, character and architecture. In addition to these compelling reasons, we are huge believers in climate change. And we see a ton of construction waste as a result of these teardowns and the, the change in the neighborhood. So again, we are happy to see that we have an opportunity to vote on the conservation overlays. And we are in full enthusiastic support of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Sabatos.
Good evening. My name is David Sabatos. Some of you know me as a few different hats on. So just to clarify, I'm here as a resident of the Sunnyside neighborhood. Who's followed these proposals since their conception. I was hesitant to come and speak before, but felt obligated to come and share my opposition to these overlays before the final vote tonight. I respect the ideas behind these overlays, but restricting home styles will not benefit my community. North Denver does have a diverse housing stock, Victorians, Adobe Revival, brick bungalows, barnaminiums, craftsmen, mid-century modern, and yes, contemporary. All can be beautiful and homeowners choose what they want based on their tastes and their needs. But it's only this last category that is the subject of scrutiny and bans. My wife and I are currently house hunting. Many older phones are, many older homes are simply not built for modern usage. You may notice I'm very tall. My extra long bed literally does not fit in the tiny bedrooms of many old North Denver homes. Proponents of this overlay will say we need to protect character of community that encourages adaptive reuse, like popping the top and keeps families in their homes at the age. None of these goals are met by the overlays. Our character is diverse and there is a demand for all housing styles. We don't live in the burbs and don't want everything to look the same. Popping the top and similar efforts only works for some homes, but it doesn't work for many others and can be at odds of those stated goals. We recently looked at a two bedroom pop top with a dangerously steep and narrow stairwell up. That was the accessibility created. The pitched roof meant two thirds of the upper floor was unusable because it was six feet tall. That house was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, still needs about ten, twenty thousand dollars of work and does not meet the needs of a modern family. Leave a dozen examples, that's bad or worse. My family does deserve a choice. No one's saying to tear down homes they don't want. But why not? If people want to preserve, they can preserve an older style home. If they want a newer style home, they can have a newer style home. This says everyone should have a front porch. We have one now. We don't sit on it. No one on my block sits on the front porch. We do sit on a neighbor's roof deck. That creates the same visibility in our neighborhood in a modern way that many younger families are looking for. These proposals are controversial at best and proponents know they can gin up the appearance of support while oppositions are quieter. Based on my last conversation with the councilwoman's office on the community outreach, this had the least amount of support of any proposed overlay in North Denver. It was highly controversial going through our RNO with respect. There was fights. People quit. The original designer of the initial overlay tried building a model home specifications and gave up because it was too expensive. Many of you know me and my passion for the city. I hope being here has some effect. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rodney Kozinski.
Hi, I'm Rodney Kozinski. I'm a resident of Sunnyside. I live at twenty-seven thirty-two West Forty-second Avenue. And in full disclosure, I was also on the work group that helped develop the overlays. And I just wanted to, Brad has talked a lot about the details and everybody's been through all of the specifics of the overlay. I wanted to just recount why, what encouraged me to join the work group. I, like many other people in the neighborhood, were concerned just how fast the character of Sunnyside was eroding. And, and it inspired me to join the group about halfway through. And as previously alluded to, there were, was a lot of controversy. It was an interesting group to work with. But I'm really proud of what we put together. I'm also an architect. I designed, my primary design focus is residential home construction. And so I designed houses of all styles and character. And I was really cognizant of that fact as we were putting together all these elements that we didn't restrict the style and character of the homes that go into Sunnyside. Mainly because Sunnyside is rich with a lot of diverse architectural styles. And I've been there for twenty-four years now and that's what we loved about the neighborhood, what made us fall in love with it when we moved there. All of the elements that we tried to include in, in the overlays really go back to one feature. And it's about maintaining the character and feel of the neighborhood and the sense of place. And that's what makes a really successful neighborhood. And the way that's accomplished in architecture is not through the particular design styles, but it's in the form and the scale of the buildings along the public realm. And that's what I really feel like through all the trials and tribulations of the work group, that we fell down to some of those fundamental elements that really defined what Sunnyside was and the character that was there. And those include the front porches and the mass and the scale of the rest of the single family and two family homes, which these two overlays address. And I'd just like to say again, I'm really proud of what we came up with, all the hard work that everybody put in. And I just wanted to express my support for these two overlays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Bill Hare.
Good evening. My name's Bill Hare. I own a small manufacturing business in Sunnyside at forty-four fifty Pan Street. And I'm extremely excited to be here tonight. This evening is the culmination of many hundreds, if not thousands of hours. I personally have been involved since the very beginning. I chaired the community planning and development committee within the Sunnyside RNO for four years. At that time, when I took on that responsibility, I was relatively new to the neighborhood. But there was one thing that came out very clearly, very early on, as I got involved with the committee. And that was the issue of the scale that was being built in a lot of new structures. Many of them duplexes, but single homes as well. And there was, I, I heard it at every meeting. I didn't hear it from one or two people. I heard it from tens and twenties of people. It was an overwhelming input that I, as a new person who got strong armed into chairing the committee, heard. I didn't even have a dog in the fight because I was a business owner, not a resident. So we started on this path and we thankfully had some expertise within the organization to draft an initial, an additional, initial overlay. And I have to really commend Councilwoman Sandoval for the structured program she put us through. But the two things that I really want to leave you with, that all due respect to David, I feel very strongly about, and that is that there is overwhelming support in the community for this. We had a total of four town halls. I think I'm probably the only one that was at all four. And in only one of them, did we really get some strong pushback and we listened to that pushback. And the primary pushback we got had to do with not wanting to regulate style. So we've been very purposeful in building an overlay that focuses on scale and allows for all sorts of different styles. You can develop a contemporary home within this overlay. You can't, we've made very specifically, we've tried to be very careful to allow people to do that. This was about scale and the fact that the size of the buildings that were being built next to some of the bungalows was overwhelming. So I just wanted to reinforce that point for everybody. Thank you very much. And I hope that you vote for the overlay.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tripti Suthar.
Hi, my name is Tripti Suthar and I live at four two two three on Tahone in Sunnyside. And I'm also on the board of the RNO, but they've submitted a letter of support already. And so I'm here as a resident, but also as a member of the work group that was put together by Amanda Sandoval. And I want to thank your office as well as Espinoza's office, because we had support from two council offices in putting this together. So people describe new development as out of context and character. I think we've got, you know, a new group of people out there who've tried to make context and character. I think we've got, you know, a new group of people out there who've tried to make context and character a dirty word. You know, but people feel it, they see it. I hear it from visitors even, who come by and say, what's with all of these boxy homes? But what they're really feeling or seeing is that the sense of place is disrupted. And so that's a big part of what we were trying to address in this overlay. This was also indicated in Blueprint Denver, precisely as context and character, preserving context and character. And the conservation overlay is indicated in Blueprint Denver as the tool to address this. I'm also on the steering committee right now for the neighborhood planning initiatives. So years later, people are talking about the same problem. They continue to see the new construction being out of context and character. I don't know if there's going to be another tool to address this, or are they going to identify the conservation tool again? So I think as an organization, we're using the tools that we have in place to be able to address the things that we're hearing and seeing. And again, it's not from a few people. It's from most people we talk to, most people who are invested in the neighborhood, who want to stay there, who've lived there. And we also noticed that the folks who build, well, the folks who update their home, who live there, they kind of stick with that same pattern. And the folks who are building these boxes aren't ones who are building them for themselves. And the folks who move in, they don't have an option of a 3,000 square foot home that isn't a box today. So all due respect, you know, people aren't building boxes for themselves. They're being built by developers who are going to move from here and move on to the next neighborhood that they can monetize. As I said, I served on, you know, this work group and again, Amanda Sandoval put it together so that we had a survey that went out to all 3,000 homes. We had 300 people, 10%. There isn't a process I've seen in any work group in the city, including NPI, get 10% of, you know, response. I'd love to see that. So we've had a better response that I've seen city processes with consultants and money, and we're doing this without any of it. So I think the changes are modest and meaningful and I encourage you to vote in support of this overlay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Rudy Garcia.
I'm a retired teacher and homeowner at 4536 Quevas, right in the heart of the area and this discussion. And I'm here in support of the overlays. I have two points. First of all, it was already referenced about a 2019 petition. I sent that to everybody on the council this morning and you can look at it at your leisure. I just want to point out a couple of things. I, as the neighbors, went to 28 houses from 4,400 Quevas to 4,558 Quevas. 20 resident homeowners, 19 signed in favor of the petition. Not including renters, which we sent on to Councilwoman Sandoval and to SUNY. The overlays in front of the council today fulfill all the significant portions of our petition. Let me emphasize, we also obtained signatures from every new homeowner, all of who happened to be Anglo, from a lawyer to an architect and other young professionals who'd recently bought homes on that street. I don't doubt the council already realizes that the overwhelming majority of Denverites are talking about this and not in the positive sense. My second point is about something that the zoning codes and the building regs totally ignore, I feel. The new people who are moving to Denver and what they get to choose from. Besides working poor elderly, retired and people of color being disturbed by insufficient protections for the neighborhoods, the city seems ignorant of how it is depriving new residents. How can I use such strong language? I can when Denver permits a massive erecting of Lego housing. Because Denver is denying new people much of a choice in housing selection, when that is a huge percentage of what's being built. The flat roofs and third-story decks don't integrate new people. They isolate them into their own niches, like they're bad kids who don't behave well. When houses have no front porches that many of us already have and use, the city limits the chances for new owners to meet and invite neighbors to join them. It's sad that some people choose not to use their porches. But the overlay would give everyone the choice to decide for themselves. Lastly, when the city condones ugly Lego construction, new owners are branded as different by the neighborhood. There's more reasons to support today's proposal that others will cover, I'm sure. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. That concludes our speakers. Are there questions for members of council on Council Bill 30 and/or 31? Councilwoman Sawyer?
Councilwoman Sandoval, or maybe this is a question for you. In terms of the community conversations, is there a, like a percentage of support? Was there a survey that went out or anything like that to the affected property owners that you could just tell us about?
Sorry. It's in the staff report. So if you go to the February 23rd, 2023 staff report in Granicus, and you go to the very end of the report, it's part of my application that I submitted. So there's 206 pages in this application. So it is on page, what page is this? Like 2, 122 of the whole entire big document. So what the, what it goes on is we asked the same type of, we didn't ask a simple question, similar to like the survey I sent you for the accessory dwelling units, do you overall support the concept? But then we got into the bulk plane, reducing the bulk plane, reducing low slope roofs. And so most of these have 59%, 65% allow dormers to pierce the bulk plane. So people can adaptively reuse that with 91% requiring forefront porches, 69% overall cap square footage, 57% setting building maximum heights and base 57%. So we got over almost 60% on every single concept that we asked from the community. And we wanted a statistically valid survey. So we always wanted to, I can't remember what that number is. If you need it, I can get it back to you. But it was statistically valid survey. So it was more than like, I think it was like over 15% of the people took the survey. So it was a huge amount of the 3,500 that we sent it out to.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cashman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Sabatos, did I ask you a question? What I'm hearing in the staff report is that this does limit size, has some design elements to it, but that it doesn't limit style. And I heard you say that you believe it does limit style.
Absolutely.
And how so?
I mean, perhaps it's missing some words of it. You know, a pitched roof is a design element. It's a style. You know, having a front porch on a house is a design element. It's a style. I mean, those are styles of homes and it very much does require some, at the detriment of other housing options. Those are all home styles.
Okay, thank you. I won't argue semantics any further. Appreciate it, David. Thank you.
First, Councilman.
Thank you very much. Just one quick question for me, Brad. The, you referenced this and I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It only affects the primary dwelling. Some of the existing zoning in the neighborhood allows for two-unit duplex and/or ADUs. It wouldn't affect how those kind of are built or what the rules are currently for those units?
For an ADU, if it was detached ADU, it would have zero impact at all. If the ADU was attached, which I think we see less of, Councilwoman could tell you more accurately, in this type of, this part of town. But nevertheless, if you did a attached ADU, it could have an impact on it because that becomes, that ADU is part of the primary building form, right? So that 3,000 square foot limit, for example, would apply to the entire primary building, including any element of the ADU that's, you know, above the basement level, that's above grade.
Got it. Thank you so much. Those are all my questions. I've been seeing no one else in queue. Public hearing is closed. Comments by members of council on Council Bill 30 and 31? Councilwoman Sandoval?
Thank you, President Torres. And thank you for everyone who spoke. This overlay we've been working on, I was trying to get the date correct. And I think I started on it, I think I went to the first meeting in 2017, maybe 2016. It could have been 2016. My memory is not as strong as it used to be being an elected official. So it's been my entire time as your elected official for District One. And it was during Councilman Espinoza that we were working on this, that this actually came to fruition. And what we did was we had roundtable discussions at a, at our police station that talked about, what did you like and what did you not like about this area? It wasn't a proposal like it is today. It was a discussion with our community at those meetings. And I will say, I never once saw David Sabatos there. He was not in attendance at those meetings, to my recollection. Tripti was. I know Bill was. I know Rudy was. And I know other people were because they were small community discussions. And I will say that unlike what one opponent said tonight, you can have a flat roof. There's actually homes being built right now in Sunnyside without this overlay at 4732. It's called the Heights at Sunnyside. And they're modern. They have brick. They have flat roofs. They might have big bedrooms, but that's all architecture style. We're not dictating a room has to be a 10 by 10 or a 10 by 11. An average side's bedroom's a 10 by 10. That's not what we're here to do this evening. We're here to talk about the character of Northwest Denver. We're here to talk about Northwest Denver in the Sunnyside neighborhood as one of the original neighborhoods in Denver. And when I say original neighborhood in Denver, many people don't understand what that means. It means that it was its own neighborhood. Denver incorporated Sunnyside. Sunnyside was already a neighborhood before Denver was founded. We incorporated the Highland neighborhood. And this was one of those original neighborhoods. And so what we're attempting to do over the past six, seven years is take traditional neighborhood building forms, such as small duplexes, bungalows, cottages, that represent the history of the working-class neighborhoods that were affordable neighborhoods. And they're being replaced with larger, more expensive housing types. We put a cap on the square footage above grade because the market drives the square footage. So if you put a market on that, maybe this area will not continue to sell for $1.5 million. Because the houses being built will be 3,000 above grade. What we're doing is we're incentivizing adaptive reuse. So we're allowing my constituents to pierce the dormer and pierce the bulk plane with the dormer so that they can stay in their neighborhood. The house I grew up in had a very big adaptive reuse. It was a bungalow. And my parents built dormers and they had a beautiful, huge master bedroom upstairs. As the neighborhood near Northwest Neighborhood Plan has continued to go on to develop, I will quote from that plan, "There are multiple concerns regarding new development in the near Northwest, which are not unlike neighborhood concerns citywide." Once again, citywide. However, unique to the near Northwest, there are specific areas of concern that are at risk to the loss of traditional neighborhood building forms and overall character. Sunnyside is currently exploring a draft conservation district to address these concerns. And Chaffee Park is at risk due to smaller scale of existing structures and more affordable housing stock. That's what this is about. We want to maintain the affordable, attainable, working-class housing stock that we have in Northwest Denver by incentivizing adaptive reuse. And as infill construction happens, have a porch. And if you choose to hang out on your porch, please do. I hang out on my porch all the time during COVID. I got to know my neighbors in a different way. I think all of us used our outside area in a different way during COVID. And mostly, that's important for me, is we are up here, the 13 of us, as reflective representatives of our community. This was a community initiative that was bottom-up. Oftentimes in government, things are from the top bottom. We legislate here and we make rules based on being at the top and not working with our community. This was community-driven. This was community-made. And the person who worked on this actually has a house that was built with these forms and standards in Sunnyside. Her and her brother built the house using these standards and has it, and her brother is living in it currently. So lastly, I'd like to thank the residents of Sunnyside. I'd like to thank the task force members. Thank you all. We started this in 2019 and unbeknownst to us, a worldwide pandemic would hit. And you all came together on Zoom and Teams. We met in the park one time, Bill, to talk about this over this use because we were dealing with the worldwide pandemic and you all continued to show up. I would like to thank Catherine for her foundation and the work that she did and the concepts and ideas that created the foundation for this. I would like to thank my predecessor, Councilwoman Espinoza, who took the time as an architect to teach me a lot of these terminologies such as bulk plane and side setback and helping me define and helping this group redefine what the definition of brick was. So we could use brick cladding. We could use different types of brick. We could use more sustainable, not just always having to use brick. I would like to thank my former staff, Naomi Granditz, and all her hard work and dedication as a subject matter expert. She created models. She created the surveys and she, her dedication to this, we would not be here today if it were not for Naomi. I would also like to thank my aides Gina and Melissa. As an elected representative, we are only as good as those who work for us. And both of my staff, Melissa and Gina, have dedicated hours and hours and hours of time to this process, attending late meetings, asking me questions to help me be able to explain this to my constituency in a way where it was not confusing and did not feel daunting. As my office manager Gina does not always like land use, I always go to her and say, does this make sense, Gina? And she says, no, it does not. And so we work on it until it does make sense to Gina so that she can inform people as they call my office and she can regurgitate what we have been working on. So people are well-informed. And I would also like just to thank all of my colleagues. I know all of you have sat here for hours and hours with me as I rezoned sunny, the whole entire, almost Northwest Denver. I created the overlay for Tennyson. I created the overlay, the bungalow overlay. Now I have two Sunnyside overlays. And I do that not just for Northwest Denver. I do that because we all get a vote on all of the matters before us. And I hope that you, as you as my colleagues, have issues with infill development, use these tools that are brought before you so that you can have better representation and have different tools in the zoning code for you to deal with the same concerns that we are dealing with in Northwest Denver. And lastly, I ask for your support for something that is so important to the Sunnyside neighborhood that I have been so honored to bring forward. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Just want to offer a couple of comments. I want to thank Councilwoman Sandoval. I think you have developed, written with community, a lot of really new and innovative processes. And I can see that that's done directly with community. And while we may hear kind of out, out in Denver, how, how much despair there is in our city, I'm reminded at how much hope there is because of the time that you take to walk an entire process through over five, maybe six years of your life to make your neighborhood better. And I am so grateful for that kind of investment and visibility that you give to it. I thought my community putting in three and a half years on our area plan was a lot, but you really have, have walked this through and found something. and found something that wasn't prescriptive or oppressive to future development, but something that really worked for what you wanted to see in your neighborhood. So thank you for doing that, and I look forward to supporting tonight. Seeing no one else in queue, Madam Secretary, roll call on Council Bills 30 and 31. Seeta Baca?
Aye.
Clark? Black? Flynn?
Aye.
Gilmore?
Aye.
Herndon?
Aye.
Hines?
Aye.
Cashman?
Aye.
Kneech? Ortega? Sandoval?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
Madam President? Aye. Madam Secretary, close the voting and announce the results. 10 ayes. 10 ayes. Council Bill 30 and 31 have passed. Thank you all. There is no pre adjournment announcement tonight. There being no further business before this body. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Distribution models, including paying people who attend serendos service programs to distribute naloxone to the communities as they are really the ones that have been doing this since the beginning, and they know how to reach folks best. And then we've also been working with some more targeted efforts in populations that we know have experienced disproportionate impacts of opioid overdoses. So through Caring for Denver, we've been able to give some funds to both the black, Native American, and Spanish-speaking populations to further disseminate naloxone. Not everyone wants to come to the government and talk to me when they're trying to get stuff for people who use drugs. And I would be remiss if I did not mention our fabulous Charlotte Hack, who's the reason why all of this is happening. Charlotte, if you'll stand. Charlotte came on as an intern with us last summer when I was all over the place and trying to figure out how to do all these things. And she is currently the person sending all of this stuff out to everyone across the city and county of Denver. And tomorrow will be her last day with us. That's all I have. Thanks, y'all.
Have to lower this quite a bit. Sorry. My name is Dani Peters. I am the manager for-